The first item on the agenda here is our quarterly meeting, the Wycom County Board of Education. Good to have everybody here. If you introduce yourselves and everybody and the guests that we have here, we'd appreciate that, so the public knows.
All right. Good afternoon. Thanks for having us in again. We appreciate this time with you every quarter. So from the Board of Education, I have Board Member John Palmer, Board Member Kristen Hazel, and Board Member Susan Beecham.
Pat here.
Got Dr. Micah Stoffer, Dr. Brian Reger, and Dr. Rick Briggs.
Thanks for being here.
And they'll probably do most of the talking as well as most of the work.
Thank you, Mr. Malone, and good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and the time to be in front of all of you. We have put together an agenda that is in front of you now and has a couple of items, I believe, that you requested to be on there. And then we've also added a few other items just to brief you on and provide information for you as well.
Excuse me, I forgot to introduce Mr. Jesse Reed, who's he's the money man, so I got to make sure I introduce him. Sorry, Jesse.
Our controller.
Our controller.
So with that, we can just go work right down the agenda, if that's okay?
Great.
And we'll start from there. So Dr. Reger is going to take us through the legislative session and just highlight some education laws of note.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. As usual, very busy legislative session in Annapolis. There were a number of bills that we were tracking. I have seven to share with you today. The first one was got probably the most press of all of them, probably as many as all the others combined, was House Bill 119, which began life as the comprehensive health education framework. The intent was to require LEAs, local education affiliates, the county boards of ed, to develop curriculum aligned to the state framework. That was then amended to be much, much more general in scope, that stated that LEAs had to follow all guidelines in the state board of education regarding curriculum, and that the state would withhold funds from LEAs who did not follow that. There was a letter of opposition sent from our board, as well as many other local boards of education, as well as the state board of education was in opposition to it once it was amended. It did pass in the House, but it died in the Senate Committee, so that did not become law. The others that I have are ones that did pass. HB 458 deals with the interagency on school construction, the IAC, which of course is one of the major funding sources for capital projects, along with what we get from county government funding. This bill moves the IAC from under the auspices of MSD to becoming its own independent state agency. We're not exactly sure how that's going to impact us in the future, but certainly something that we're tracking. We have a pretty good relationship with IAC. They were just on site several weeks ago to complete some inspections in some of our buildings, and the reports, I'm pleased to say, came out very positive. Also in this bill is the repeal of two grants that we have made great use of in Wycom County Public Schools in recent years, the school safety grant program and the aging schools program. Important to note that the repeals are those who don't take effect until June 30 of 2026. So working with our colleagues at MAVE, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, we'll be working to continue to oppose those grants being removed in the future. We'd still have a couple of years to hopefully do that. The bill also, the law also requires LEAs to report on the feasibility of wind, solar, geothermal, and other alternative energy systems. HB 551, something of interest to us, I'm sure to you as well, is requires the state to study how they can incentivize broadband providers to provide services to unserved and underserved areas within the state. So looking forward to how that might positively impact many folks in our community, especially students, being able to access the internet at home.
How does that dovetail with the efforts we're already doing? Because, you know, we've had the contract thirteen and a half million for Talky to do the east side. From what I understand now, the west side has just been awarded to Chop Tank, and they're going to be doing a build out, starting with about a year to take that three-year project. So how does that dovetail with what?
Yeah, that's a good question, and as I've had the same thought, and I'm on the west side, and I have some neighbors who I know are very excited about that. This is more looking at studying how to incentivize broad. So we know there's some incentives out there already that we've done around the state, just trying to further incentivize broadband providers to hit those really remote areas where it may not be, without some incentive, may not be very feasible from a cost perspective to provide broadband service. So trying to-
They're supplying funding right now for Talky and for Chop Tank to get into the market to compete with the individuals who are already there not wanting to serve, in other words Comcast, right? Because Comcast isn't wanting to serve those smaller areas, they're saying it's not cost-effective, and I understand that. But so now they're going to try to figure out ways to make it more appealing for Comcast to now come back and compete with the-
That's my understanding. It would be for any, it didn't specify Comcast, it says broadband providers in general.
Okay, because I, yeah, all right. Which one is, which bill is-
That was HB 551.
HB 551, okay. All right, thanks.
HB 770 dealt with the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. You'll hear a lot more about the blueprint in a few minutes from Dr. Briggs, but it just made a couple of small alterations, including the death, how they define tier-one children for pre-K, and clarifying duties of assistant principals who go on the still-to-be-developed career ladder. So we're certainly tracking that. HB 1219 is the Maryland Educator Shortage Act, and its aim is to encourage college students to pursue teaching careers, and also some additional changes related to teacher recruitment and retention. SB 610 dealt with virtual education. We know that can hit us hard and quick in 2020, about three years ago, and this had three prongs to it. The first is to allow, continue to allow virtual severe weather days, and just providing some regulations around that. Requires that virtual school teachers are members of the bargaining unit, and that virtual schools are not to be operated by for-profit entities. There's a two-year extension of what we have operating on the eastern shore of Maryland right now, although Wycom County will not participate in that program next year. And they're also planning for potential long-term shifts to virtual learning, such as we saw during the pandemic, just trying to be better prepared should there be need to do some long-term virtual learning in the future. Do you have a question, Mr. Wayne?
Yeah, so a private school couldn't have a virtual learning?
No, no. It's requires, if a public school is doing a virtual school, it requires that the teachers in the virtual school who are teaching for the public schools and teaching public school students are part of the bargaining unit, meaning Unit One, not requiring membership in any association or union, but just that bargaining unit that encompasses, for us, we call Unit One, our teachers and certificated staff. So in essence, what we have now on the eastern shore and the consortium is contracted with a for-profit company. It basically is disallowing that, although they are allowing that two-year extension to continue that work. We're not going to do it at a large sale effort, we're going to have, do our own virtual options next year, although we will be able to potentially use vendors on a as-needed basis for, you know, if it's a special case for a student. But this deals more with, if you're doing a full-scale virtual school, they're saying the teachers should be teachers just like the teachers in the building. And SB 828, one that, something that you probably are familiar with as well, because it impacts all of us who are employers in the state, the family medical leave insurance program, we'll also call the Time to Care Act. We were very pleased that this bill passed because this pushes everything back one year. Instead of having to start contributions in September of this year, it pushes to September of 2024, with benefits starting now in January of '26 instead of January of '25. Just gives us a lot more time to plan for budget and for implementation. That's kind of the major bills that we were tracking. All right, yeah. Budget update, just briefly. I was, I know Dr. Stoffer is here. I was watching from my office this morning when Ms. Rorano and Ms. Olman presented the budget. We were very pleased to see that that included the approximately $1 million over maintenance of effort for the Board of Education for FY '24. Just wanted to briefly share what that, where that's coming from. And of course, we all know the historic levels of inflation that we've seen over the last couple of years. It's really hit us hard in some of the ongoing costs of doing business, such as insurance, utilities, fuel, maintenance, and school safety. So requesting that in order to help us meet those ongoing needs.
In addition, I also want to make sure that the council understands that within that $1 million includes three new school resource officers that'll be within our budget. We are able, through a reoccurring grant that comes from the state of Maryland, to be able to do the salaries for two positions, and we're asking for the council to be able to, if they include that $1 million above maintenance of effort, that'll be for, in part, three other positions, giving us a total of five new SROs that we are hoping to be in our buildings at some point towards the beginning of next school year.
What's an SOR?
I'm sorry.
Cost per year?
It is probably, I would say, on average, we budget about $80,000. Is that correct, Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Per officer.
And they get a vehicle?
Yes. So it's included, not only the salary and the benefits, but also the training and the equipment are included in with that budget line item as well. So we are inclusive of everything that it would cost for that SRO to be placed within the school system, and the training that would go along with it, because there's additional training that's required.
What are you all doing about the code of conduct in the schools? Because from what I hear from students and teachers, it's like the wild, wild west in some of these schools. And we're just, you know, I'm just curious on what are you allowing your SROs to actually do? Can they actually prevent fights, or do they just get involved whenever it's a serious altercation?
So the SROs get involved whenever there's a crime that is committed. They're not there necessarily to take the place of an administrator and do those kinds of responsibilities, but they're there to enforce the law. So any type of violence, or assault, or anything like that would be something that an SRO would be able to handle, as well as it's against the law to disrupt the school environment, that can be a chargeable offense as well.
Can you all get me stats of the last four to five years of the violence versus what it used to be four to five years prior? Like, how is it going since, you know, since we've gotten less SROs in our school? Like, what's the, what's the fight altercations, you know? What's going on in our schools?
SROs haven't decreased. So we've had roughly ten school resource officers in our building, probably at least for the last ten years. I always look over at Mr. Baker for that, because he knows firsthand. So we're looking to not only sustain what we've had for a long time, but increase that as well.
And as to the code of conduct, the board set priorities at the beginning of the year. One of those was school discipline slash code of conduct. And we've had three public work sessions where we've talked about all the different issues within the schools, and you're right, there's a lot of issues. And then the next work session, which is the 24th of April, will be working just on the code of conduct and making, maybe making modifications to it to put more teeth in it.
Yeah, because, you know-
I mean, we're hearing the same things you're hearing.
Yeah, students, you know, their safety is very critical from other students, and, you know, we need to do the best we can to protect those students, because there's nothing they can do to defend themselves. You know, they're in these schools, and they get attacked, what do they do? You know, they have to take a beating, or they get punished as well. So that's something that we need to consider. If these kids are having to defend themselves, you know, should we be reprimanding kids for defending themselves?
We're looking on all of that, and the second priority is school safety, which goes hand in hand, and that's why we're adding SROs, because we got to be prepared for not only internal situations, but we've all seen the news the last two weeks, what external situations can occur. So we have to be prepared, and we're working on that.
Are five SROs, you think enough for your schools? I mean, you have like twenty-six.
I would say that we're looking at ways to increase that school resource officer division within our schools. We feel like in talking with Sheriff Lewis, that five is the progression that he was, he would be able to do with his recruitment efforts, and hopefully be able to support us in doing as we move forward. But as our long-range goal, we're hopeful and recognizing that school resource offices are essential to school safety, that we're looking to grow that so that as many of our schools can have a school resource officer as possible.
And you could see a reduction in crime. The more SROs you have-
Absolutely.
More visibility they are.
And we see what's going on around the nation. Obviously, technology is important, and we'll talk about the one-time funding that the council provided us with in just a moment, and the things that we've been doing with that. But we feel strongly that the best deterrent is to have that trained school resource officer in as many of our schools as possible.
If I had the money, we'd have one in every school, to Mr. Baker's point. People say, why elementary? Because you see the sheriffs car sitting out there, and you're a bad guy. You may think twice about going into that school. It's not just that what they can do themselves, it's the image, and you're spot on, so.
Are metal detectors not feasible to have at our schools? Because I, you know, I know there's other states that have metal detectors going into the schools, you know? I don't know if that's something that you can get a grant for, or do anything like that. I know it's a lot more work, but, you know, at the cost of safety, I think that's, that would be worth it.
So weapons detection systems have been on our radar for a couple of years now. We've actually gone to see a pilot of one. We're still looking at the technology, because it's advancing rapidly. Artificial intelligence as well, that's linked up to our security cameras, are another line of defense that we've been looking at as well. So I think that, is it feasible? Absolutely. Right now, when we looked at it last year, the technology was really not where it needed to be, as far as, and what it would take as far as the manpower to be able to, you know, move students through in an effective, safe, and effective way. But I think it's rapidly advancing, and that is definitely on our radar screen to be able to be considered as we move forward. We're looking at both of them.
Ryan, you were talking about a ton of legislative bills that have just been, had just passed through the, through Annapolis. Any sense of, in line of what James is saying, any sense of what the state's doing, or the federal government is doing? Who can't say that the awareness is higher now than it's ever been? Is there any sense of what may be coming from the federal government or the state government to try to really address it?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything from the feds. From the state, it was a surprise in that AIB bill that they were removing, or looking to remove in three years, the one school safety grant. There are a couple of state-level safety grants that we take advantage of, and we're constantly tracking to look for how those might be increasing, or are there other opportunities out there? But certainly with that being on such a national radar now, we do look for that to hopefully offer other opportunities to arise.
Yeah, and if you, honestly, I think sometimes people think, they take it for granted that we really know everything that's going on, but I think you got, you all are more in tune with, obviously, what's happening with the Board of Education, and that includes safety in the Board of Education. If, you know, we would love to work in collaboration with you, whenever you need our assistance to get letters out to the Eastern Shore delegation, or to any congressmen, senators, U.S. senators, we would be very, more than willing to try to make a very concerted effort to get those funds down here. But we really, you could help us really a lot by letting us know maybe where we need to target, if you see it come up on the radar.
Appreciate that.
I think as Dr. Reger indicated, we're looking at that bill very closely and the effects of that over the next three years prior to the end of that grant happening. So if we see an opportunity to be able to voice opposition to it, we'll certainly include the council in that.
Yeah, that, yes, that'd be great.
This is a good start, but I would love to see it depe in every school.
Agreed. And that's our goal.
Twenty-six.
I mean, Mike Liston said, as you said, he does not have the staff right now. He has, he needs him on the street.
Right.
I mean, school, yeah.
We've put together a package of what we know we can provide in the budget, and what we've asked the council to help us with, and we're trying to be prudent with that. And at the same time, we're working closely with Sheriff Lewis on what we know he can help with, and put his efforts toward. So this is only a start, but know that our goal is to have a school resource officer in as many schools as possible, and potentially some of our larger schools may need more than one.
Good. We can get there.
All right. In terms of construction update, you've probably seen that we have coming up on May 11th. Very pleased, 1:30 in the afternoon, to have our Beaver Run rededication ceremony. So that school is complete now, the site work on the outside's been done. Beautiful school, I hope you all get a chance to come join us for that event. If you've driven by Mardella, you've seen a lot of work going on there as well. Phase one is just about done. The project continues to be on time and on budget. Students will be getting out a couple days early this year to facilitate the transition from phase one to phase two. They're going to hit the ground running, it's a very tight window to get things done over the summer, so that we can be in place to open the school year on time in September. That includes moving several of the portables out and occupying what classrooms are being constructed in phase one, which are primarily some of the high school classrooms, new cafeteria, and new fine and performing arts spaces, and I think family consumer sciences. While we move into there, the construction team will be moving into other classrooms, and they'll be beginning demo and reconstruction early in the summer, moving that into phase two, and then into phase three. And what we'll see over time is continuing a reduction in the number of portables out front, as more and more phases and classrooms come online in the building. So we're very excited about that.
I think between the county and the Board of Ed, we've done a great job. Jeff and I, Jeff invited me to speak at the Rotary, you know that's a full house, right? But, and part of it, though, is I get to tell them, you don't realize exactly how much we had done. We have a new Bennett Jr., we have a new Bennett Sr., Wes Salisbury, Beaver Run, Mardella. I mean, over the last few years, we have, we have invested a lot of money, and it's part of, you know, with what this council's done, with what the executive's done, and with every one of you have done, to really make all that happen. Because every single school is really, is a real obligation on our part. It's a lot of money, it's a lot of investment, but we've been churning it a lot lately. I think, you know, people lose sight of just how much we have been doing.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it is.
And I think we do appreciate the support, please know that. And we've had good opportunities with, obviously, our Director of Planning and Construction does a great job of threading funds together and doing, you know, such a large lift with her and her entire team, and being able to do the amount of work that we're doing. It's exciting to ride by Mardella and see that second story and the second, I'd say, story structure, be able to come up over the original structure. So that's neat to see.
I thought I'd have to say that. Isn't a school, we're talking $50 million for a school, right? Average?
Beaver Run was a little over that. Mardella will probably be over $70 million when it's done, and certainly if we were to, you know, build another Bennett High School or somewhere like that, that, again, that would be well over 100, I'm sure.
That's at the current cost of building materials.
That's right.
Yeah.
For clarity, for a while there, I don't know what change has been made, but we had 92, 95% of the school construction cost was paid for by the state.
Yes.
How has that shifted since the last couple of years? I know there was a bill two years ago that made it through in the school construction. Are we, how much would we, if we were to put up a new high school, which I firmly believe we should do, what, how much would that?
It's a complicated formula, and it deals with a number of issues, including the capacity that you have in current buildings, and what's available in adjacent areas. So it'd be difficult to say if we were going to build a new high school, how much, what the cost share would be, because it would depend on factors like where you, where you would put it, and what the capacity of the neighboring schools are. So it'd really be difficult to answer that. That's some of the major factors are that, there's capacity issues in the school that you're replacing, if it's a replacement school, and if it's a new school or a replacement school, capacity in adjacent areas.
Depending on the formula, if it's something that the state is in agreement with regarding that formula and the enrollment, it's, I'm not sure if it's still 100% capacity or close to it, but they will, they will fund close to 100% of the construction cost. This according to the planning and design and everything else that goes into that is typically what the county and locals, local would cover here.
I think where the state falls short a lot of times is they won't pay for building over where the capacity could be, because, you know, population shifts, neighborhoods, you know, we don't want to talk about, what's that, what's that bad word that you talk about?
Redistrict.
Redistricting, we don't want to talk about that. And, but, you know, and it would make sense to build a school that would have more capacity than what you currently have, because of the cost of doing it, for one thing.
Right.
So I think the state falls short on that.
They do. What typically happens is in this area, pockets within the county grow so quickly that they'll look at the enrollment from the last five years, but you start the process so early. You know, Mardella was started probably five years ago at that point back then, as far as the designs of it and the schematics and all of that. So by the time the construction's actually finished, you know-
Development could change the whole picture.
Six, seven years later-
Right.
You see the result of that many times, we're already at full capacity. All right. Any other questions on construction? All right. Turn it over to Dr. Briggs for an update on Blueprint.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffer. Just a quick update, reminder of the five pillars or policy areas that the Blueprint covers, and that is early childhood education, high quality and diverse teachers and leaders, college and career readiness, more resources for students to be successful, and then governance and accountability. So those are the five areas that the Blueprint covers. We did submit our plan to both the AIB and MSD by the March 15th deadline. The total plan, which is posted on our website, 192 pages answering and responding to 164 questions. Our team of internal staff and external stakeholders that provided feedback was extremely beneficial, good collaboration amongst the entire community to draft that plan. The MSD is currently reviewing those plans, and will be making a recommendation to the AIB for the approval, or to send back to the LEAs for revision. We should start to hear something about those approval processes in May. The May 11th is the next AIB meeting where they're going to respond to those. We have not received any formal feedback, although I am proud to say that on Friday afternoon, when I returned to my office from a school visit, I received a phone call from an AIB member who had just read our pillar one, or early childhood responses. And she had called, and kudos to her for taking the time to do it. She called to reach out just to say how thorough and how well-written our plan was, and how it was one of the best that she'd read out of the entire state. So kudos to our early childhood supervisor, Melissa Eiler, and her leadership, and the team that drafted that plan. So we will definitely keep you updated on any feedback that we receive. And then just a reminder that this is not a one-year thing, this is a 10-year plan. We do need to submit another revised plan next March 15th, so March 15th, 2024. So we've already begun the process of looking at what we're doing, what's working, and what tweaks need to be made moving forward. So definitely keep the council aware.
I have one question on that one. So this past session, there's a salary amount that's supposed to be paid for the Blueprint Coordinator, $150,000. It's my understanding that it's to be split between, you know, the state funding and the county funding. Are you guys familiar with that?
So what actually ended up being approved was about half of that. So I believe the total is around $83,000, and that would come towards the local school system from the state for the support of Blueprint. So we are looking at that, obviously, with Blueprint. There are new things that are happening regarding national board certification. That's increasing rapidly among our 1,400 teachers. So we see a real need to be able to support that growth as we move forward, along with some other timelines. So that's kind of where we're thinking about, that funding would be used, but my understanding is it's $83,000 roughly, that'll come for a salary of a new employee that will help for the implementation of Blueprint.
So it went from the $150,000 down to the 83?
Eighty-three. It was $2 million for the entire district, or for the entire state, is what got passed.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. So Ken Island, just wanted to provide the council with an update on the Queen Anne's County slash Ken Island High School situation that unfortunately has been occurring since a basketball game on February 24th. I think the council's pretty familiar with some of the background of that. I just wanted to provide an update on where we are currently with that situation. So after the basketball game concluded, we immediately went into a full investigation on our end, talking with, obviously, our students, fans, coaches, and others, bus driver, and others that we know were present at the game. Ken Island did the same thing. Obviously, their investigation resulted in something completely different than our investigation. It's difficult, because it's two different counties. The MPSSA governs Maryland Athletics. It stands for the Maryland Public Secondary School Athletic Association. It is an offshoot, or a derivative of MSD. In the bylaws of the MPSSA that governs Maryland Athletics, it states that when there's a dispute between two counties regarding the situation, that it's up to the superintendents of those counties to resolve that issue. We did agree with Ken Island, or Queen Anne's County, that an independent investigation would be helpful, because, again, the results of their investigation, our investigation yielded something that was so different. They were in agreement with that. We reached out to the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. We also reached out to the Maryland Inspector General for Education, and when- yielded something that was so different. They were in agreement with that. We reached out to the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. We also reached out to the Maryland Inspector General for Education. And when they pointed us back to the bylaws of MPSSA saying that the two superintendents would have to resolve this issue by working through it, we also reached out to a third-party attorney's office that we felt like would be independent and something that we could look at. Obviously, there is a cost involved involving a third party such as that. Queen Anne's County Board of Education was not supportive of paying any type of cost into the investigation. So, that really left us back at ground zero from where we started. Independent of all of that, we have been working with the Queen Anne's County Superintendent and officials in trying to move forward with this and creating what we would term a safety plan or an action plan to be able to resume athletics. Since this incident has happened, we have not been playing Ken Island High School in athletic competition. Because those schedules were already approved back last, the end of last school year was when that schedule was created, that becomes a binding contract almost between athletics and also different counties. Because we were not playing that approved schedule, we were, we have been accepting forfeits as a result of that, because we're the ones that are not wanting to put our students back into what we would deem as an environment that's not appropriate and safe for our students at this time. We've been working with Queen Anne's County to develop an action plan that will hopefully help us be able to move forward. We're still very much interested in an independent investigation, but we're moving forward with putting a safety plan in place that we hope would almost be something that, say, the independent investigation came back to us and it said, yep, what you believed to have happened did occur, then we would have to put a plan in place, correct? So, we're moving forward as if maybe that an investigation already yielded that answer. We still think that there's value in an investigation, because it could point to other things that we may need to be able to include in the plan. But, at the same time, we're very interested in being able to have a safe environment for our students. We're also interested in our students being able to continue with the state tournament in the playoffs as we move forward at the end of the season. So, that's our situation at this point in time. We're creating a plan in conjunction with Queen Anne's County Public Schools. And hopefully, that will be very proactive moving forward, so that our students are in a safe environment and our coaches and our referees and officials and administrators are all on the same page and knowing what to look for to ensure that our students can be able to play in a safe environment that's productive for them.
And I applaud you for going, it sounds like you've gone above and beyond to try to make, you know,
And I will, not to interrupt, but I will say that Mrs. Ashani, I know, is sitting behind me. The entire community, our Board of Education, our staff, our coaches, our teachers, our parents, everyone in this community has been extremely supportive. We feel like we've taken the right stance, we know we have, in making sure that our students are not subjected to any type of racial or derogatory statements or any type of environment that's unsafe or unjust for them. And our community is behind us in taking that stand. So, that's been very strengthening to us. And we're continuing to work hard and move forward.
Board was unanimous in their support of what Dr. Stouffer and his team have done in this situation. I mean, we're on the right side of this issue. Everywhere I go, is it Mardella yesterday for the dedication of the batting cages, people say, hey, what you did with the Ken Island issue is spot-on. You know, we'll take the forfeits. It's not fair. I'm disappointed MPSSA didn't step in and say, okay, you don't get a loss and they don't get a win until this gets resolved in a better way, but they didn't do that. And so, we had to accept the forfeits. But, that was a disappointment.
And our principles have been very outspoken regarding that support as well. They felt like if it wasn't, if this incident didn't happen with Parkside High School, but if it's not right for Parkside High School students, it's not right for any of our high school students within the county. And they were unanimous in that support, as well as our senior leadership and other staff as well.
No, you don't want to take the forfeitures, you know, for this year, but the solution's very simple. Just don't ever go back, you know?
In the future, you just wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to schedule them at all.
You can schedule them.
Fill them with private schools or other schools, correct?
Right.
If we'd had time, that's what we would have done this year.
Yeah, the schedule for each season is completed the previous year at the end of that season.
Zero them off next year and, you know, maybe that'll make them come around.
Well, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, we'll be able to, I do think it's in the best interest of our students to be able to work towards a resolution where their students and our students are both working together in an environment that's appropriate for everyone. But, we're, we have to be able to get there.
I'm not familiar with the hierarchy, but where do you go when you're not satisfied with what the MPSSA is, has decided? Where do you go from there? Do you go to the Governor's Office? Do you go to the Attorney General's Office? Where do you go? And I don't think you're making a mountain out of a molehill. I feel very strongly, now, the forfeits, does that impact Parkside as far as the state, getting to the state level?
Currently, all of our schools for spring sports would go to the state tournament despite their record. But, obviously, the seeding within that tournament would reflect what their overall record would be. So, most of our sports teams, spring sports play, like Ken Island, they would play about one, usually just one time at some time, at some point during the season.
I think we've been, Mr. Malone made the comment that we're on the right side on this one, but we're not getting the right side of this one. So, where do we go? I mean, I don't know if this government body can help together with the executive or whether we have to appeal to Eastern Shore delegation. Again, I'm not familiar with the hierarchy in regard to this. So, where do we go? What direction is possibly necessary over and above the really good work that you've done
Sure.
to try to get the MPSSA to regrow?
Sure.
And I just don't see where a forfeit is being fair when the safety of the children was the primary goal.
So, we did appeal that decision to the Bayside Conference and the legislative body within the Bayside Conference. And that is, you know, they did give us a reprieve of one week to be able to rectify any or resolve any situation that we could. Obviously, this has taken much longer than that and it needs to. Ultimately, to answer your question, the State Superintendent, you know, would oversee the school systems within the state and also the Athletic Association as well, because MPSSA is a part and gets their governing authority from MSD.
So, it's the State Superintendent that we should appeal to?
Yes. I believe at this point, everyone has pointed us back to the governing bylaws of MPSSA, like I said, which are very clear in saying that when there is a dispute, that two counties, the superintendents from those counties work through the dispute. I think part of working through that dispute is obviously creating a plan that will help move both counties forward in athletic competition. So, we've already moved forward in working to develop that plan. As far as the independent investigation, ultimately, I'm not sure to answer your question exactly if that can be ordered or the authority to be able to say that that has to occur or not.
Yeah, and I get it. You're trying to go forward with this, and I get that 100%. I just still think that the forfeitures should be waived or whatever the term might be. I don't know where you go for that. You're saying you go to the State Superintendent on the forfeitures?
That would be, that would be my thought.
Would it be helpful to have like a joint letter from the Wycomico County Board of Education and County Council or something along those lines?
I think a summary of what's occurred at this point in time and support for us to take that decision further would be an avenue that we could take. In conjunction with, again, us still continuing to work towards an agreed-upon plan.
I think we would like to do that, right? Try to put some pressure on them. So, but we need your help
Sure.
in putting it together.
We would do that.
And wherever it has to go. And we would also talk one-on-one to Eastern Shore delegation if they were to want, or just as a Eastern Shore delegation to send a support letter as well, because I don't know what they've done to this point in time. They may have showed up, they may have showed up or shown up, shown up to a meeting. But, we want to try to make sure that we go in with as much firepower as we need to make an impression on the State Superintendent.
No, I appreciate your support.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The state delegates contacted me for your person, your information. Did he get up with you? Did you have any contact with any of the state delegation?
The only one that I've talked to recently is Mr. Anderton.
Okay, okay. It wasn't him. That's somebody else. Okay.
Yeah, because, again, I think you've made really strong efforts in resolving this so that maybe the future will be a little more promising. But, I think we need to look back on what happened. And right now, it seems to me that the forfeits are the biggest issue right now.
We are following the process as has been outlined to us and what's, what we see in writing within the bylaws of the Athletic Association. I do think that there is, in my opinion, this is something that's not necessarily planned for. And it seems like there is a gap in planning for a dispute of this nature. But, I'd certainly appreciate the support, both from the community and also the council or Board of Ed and others as we move forward.
Mrs. Ashani, if you, I'll let you come to the podium, if you don't mind, because I know this is a topic you've been on top of, even filing very carefully.
I think Mary Ashanti, and I know this is not part of your protocol and I appreciate it. All of this is simple. I keep listening to what's said. You cannot bargain or make a solution with someone that said they did no wrong and they have done it for two years. My recommendation is that a joint letter be sent to the Maryland State Board of Education Superintendent, asking him to investigate this situation and help come up with the solution and not leave it in the hands of the local, because you got Wycomico that's willing and they've been spending a lot of time on it and they're not getting anywhere. They cannot make Kent County school system do anything. I showed you the letter, Kent County posted, saying they never did anything wrong. So, now it is up to the Maryland State Superintendent. And I'm asking you all to jointly ask him to investigate and help come up with the solution. And also, there needs to be a correction with the forfeits. They punishing people that did no wrong. The forfeit should have went to Parkside, Kent Island. They're the one that produced a hostile situation. Wycomico was trying to help and protect their students as the black parents asked. So, it's a waste of time to keep trying to come up with a plan that really the superintendent needs to do. They need to investigate. They need to do their job.
We can, I think we can include both. We can include both in that. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, when I first was reading about it, I thought, you're going to ask two counties to try to come up with a solution? There has to be somebody above that. There has to be someone in place as an arbitrator, to say the least, because both counties, to a certain extent, have to protect their own interests. So, we can, we can work on both aspects, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Okay.
Just a brief announcement, State of the Schools is next Tuesday. So, that's an address that'll take place at the Civic Center that I'm excited about. As a part of the entry plan, when I came in as a new superintendent last July, I published that, in that plan, that I would be going through a community engagement phase, which I did for at least five months or so, speaking in a number of different engagements, having community forums, speaking with all of the staff and faculty meetings at our schools, talking with our, you know, school, student government associations and others, and looking at student input as well. So, compiling all of that input that was received from the community and staff and parents, I'm excited to be able to share some things at State of the Schools with what our priorities will be as we move forward as a school system, looking really specifically at school climate and safety, looking at student achievement, expanded opportunities for students to be able to engage in education, recruiting and retaining a high-performing workforce, and including our parents and our community members as valued stakeholders in what we do. So, those priorities will be explained at the State of the Schools next week. So, just making the council aware of that.
Data set.
That's Tuesday, the 25th.
And I'll wrap things up with just a brief update on the one-time funding. First, we wish to express our appreciation to the council for working with us on that. And we finally got the final approval from MSD last month to move forward. And we have moved forward on these initiatives, including the upgrading security cameras from an analog system to an IP-based digital system, which allows us to, from anywhere in a district, pull up cameras from any school, which has been really helpful in looking at specific incidences and promoting the school safety, as well as making sure that students are held accountable when that's necessary. Additional security fencing, we've had visits from our JSE contractor to a number of schools. We'll be looking to begin installation immediately upon receipt of materials to the vendor to begin providing additional fencing around. Looks, we're going to start with five schools to begin with. And then, we also saw the, if you saw the board meeting last month, that we approved the contract for security film installation. This is a material that goes over large, what we call storefront windows, primarily at school entrances, that are not truly bulletproof. You can, but if you shoot at it, it protects the glass. So, there's a video from the manufacturer, 3M Online, you can see where they're standing just a few feet away, fire several rounds at it, take the butt of the rifle and can't go through it. If you saw some of the security footage from Nashville, I think you can appreciate the importance of that kind of material being placed in our schools. So, we're excited to get that installed. We have an approved vendor who'll be making site visits in the next two weeks to see our schools and are looking to begin installation in June.
About the backup cameras?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to talk with Ms. Miles. She was feeling ill today and wasn't able to make it. I know I don't know if those have been, what's that?
He has ordered them.
Okay, they've been ordered. Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's a shame we have to have a conversation about school security, but we thank you for being proactive in that area.
We really value the partnership that we do have with our Sheriff's Department. And a lot of the initiatives that we move forward with come from not only the Sheriff's Department, but obviously, our Safe Schools Coordinator, who is a former deputy sheriff. And that partnership is extremely important, as they're walking in and out of our schools all day long. They're making the suggestions on what would be beneficial and the processes and the things that even that don't cost money, you know, how we do things, the business, the way that we conduct business, many times with visitors and others. Those kinds of things are invaluable. And that comes from our trained law enforcement officers. So, we appreciate that partnership. That's very supportive and helpful for us.
Did you say your Code of Conduct meeting was, you said the 24th?
24th, yep.
Okay.
It's 8:30, 10:30, 8:30 to 10:30.
It's dealing with policy in general, including the Code of Conduct.
Including the Code of Conduct. But, it's an open work.
Other items as well. It's an open board work session.
Great. All right. Well, we really appreciate you taking the time and putting the agenda together for us. That's wonderful.
Absolutely.
I guess between Mrs. Hurley and however you might want to handle it, as far as the joint letter is concerned, keep in mind that it may be something we also want to encourage the Eastern Shore delegation to use in the same way. So,
Absolutely.
We appreciate your time and your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Mr. Illuminati, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, sir.
And Ms. Knock, how are you? You've been doing a lot of great work.
I'm a speedster.
Come on up, here. So, that the public knows, if you could let everybody know who you are and your positions. Thank you.
Andrew Illuminati, Office of the County Attorney.
Andrew Illuminati, Office of the County Attorney.
Kim Knock, Executive Director of the Humane Society of Wycomico County.
Patrick Guyer, Animal Control Officer, Wycomico County.
Appreciate you all being here. And I think this is always a really tough one sometimes, whenever it involves animals and it goes back and forth, and it can last forever, I know. But I believe we have some type of a consensus on what we need to do to put things into final motion here.
Yes, may I just give a quick background?
Sure.
All right. So, over the past, Kim, how long have you been?
It'll be four years.
Four years, so right before COVID, we've been prosecuting the animal citations that get issued by animal control. And over that time, animal control's kept a list of events that occur where there are no charges, or where charges are issued, and we go to court, and the judge says, that doesn't meet my interpretation of the code. And you have these animals that are doing various things. Also, you get calls from the public for complaining about certain interactions with animals, neighbors, and so they've kept a log of that. And so the legislation before you went to the process in the county is that it can go to the Animal Appeals Board. They met last year, they reviewed the KIMs and animal controls recommendations, they voted on them, they talked about them. And then I believe council had a work session, but not this council, it's currently constituted, the previous iteration. And now this is before this council to ask questions, look at the legislation that's been proposed. And we, the belief is that this will dramatically shore up any holes that are in the law, clarify any points that the judges have, and then also allow the public to have more input. So one of the biggest problems is somebody will complain about barking dogs, and it happens in the middle of the night. Well, animal control doesn't work in the middle of the night. And they make their complaint, but when animal control actually goes out to, you know, issue a citation, the dog's not barking, whatever it is. And so, it's unfortunate that animal control has to issue a citation for something off of somebody else's word, but this is now going to make the public actually do more than just call and leave a message at 1:00 in the morning. It's going to make them write down their statement of facts, what had happened, where it happened, because the most of the time when we get to court, the animal control officer can't testify to it because they didn't witness it. And the citizen doesn't want to come, and then to court, and they complain at the end of the day, well, nothing's changed. Well, the problem is, is you still need to come. And so, what's been addressed is allowing the public to file a complaint form that then will be the basis. They make sure that those individuals get subpoenaed to come to court to offer their testimony, and then the court will make the determination whether or not there's a violation. So, that's the broad stroke of it. Are there any questions generically? How do you want to work through this? But this is more or less the same form, but with previous councils' recommendations or questions and incorporations, so.
Yes, Josh.
I know, of course, we've had a couple of folks come in who've been very passionate about this. One gentleman had, his parents lived in my district, they, his dog, Charlie, was attacked. And I don't know if you know that situation very well?
Yeah.
And said, of course, that, points that he had brought up were, of course, that the dog that attacked was very well-known to be an animal that was not able to interact in a manner without being violent. So he brought that issue up, and then also the issue, he said, mentioning, of course, the conflict in his terms between the Humane Society and its role, and the county animal control. Wanted to see if that could be addressed in some sort of way, or feeling like there needed to be more, I guess, buffer in between, or more ability to be independent, to say that this particular animal is harmful, or something along those lines. I also had another issue over, he was in my district, where neighbors got to witness poor dog, it was left out in the cold, and below, I mean, it was, you know, the coldest nights that we've had this year. So, I know that that brought us back to the questions that we had before, I wanted to see if that was addressed, which of course was in flooring, and then in, and then in temperature.
You reference what address that was?
I don't even know.
You don't?
I mean, I can go look, and I'm not.
Just if we had any interaction.
Yeah, I think the more important is the bigger issue of, for that situation, there was a small dog, it was below freezing. We don't specify, do we currently specify in the language, as it has been updated, a particular temperature, or is it only, I think we had spelled, I think I read it before, it's spelled out, you know, in bad weather conditions, which it means generally.
I do believe it references temperature, a lower temperature and a higher temperature, and I do believe it also gives us the ability to take into account breed and size.
And then same thing, I think the issue that we had before was on flooring. I know that we were talking about the different types of flooring and the type of, then, I guess, the ceiling, if there was a structure. I think the question was brought up last time of whether or not it was, you know, does a tarp count if it's a nice tarp, you know? I think I saw that updated here, of course, the, being more clear on the, on the language, whether it's waterproof or those kind of things. So, anything you guys you wanted to say as far as, I think the issue is just bringing it back for every, put in front of everyone remembers, that was some of the other things that we wanted to address, was that they wanted to have a clear understanding of, what was the floor and what was the ceiling for a structure that could be, that could be housed a dog. And to be clear, that was, of course, because many of these were cages, that, you know, the wind can blow through, and didn't have a good, and some of them had a tarp. So, anything you want to say there as far as updates?
Definitely, materials are important. And then bedding was one of the things that we really wanted to include. It's very important that there's bedding in there, and what kind of bedding. There's things that are appropriate and things that aren't appropriate. So, can I ask you something? I did not know this went in front of the appeals board. This was discussed in front of the appeals board?
Yes.
Okay.
You were there?
No, I was? Oh, good lord.
That's when you know you worked, you are.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I, the same thing as Josh, I was glad to see that we tightened up on the shelter issue and things like that. On section 133-18B, where it's all in capital, and the bottom says, "The animal control officer may issue a citation on the complaint without corroboration of the allegation."
Yes, so they can issue it.
Does that not create a real series of vague circumstances that are hard to deal with in court?
Definitely poses an issue, but as we said, animal control can't really go out there and corroborate. So what I'll use as an example is, in the criminal system, two people can get into an altercation, no one witnesses it, no one calls 911, they go to the commissioner and they file a complaint, and they say, "This person hit me, I didn't consent to it." The commissioner can issue charges, and then it's up to the judge to decide, but the parties that witnessed it have to come to court. So this is the biggest issue, is individuals calling, leaving a message, saying the dog's barking at 1:30, and then it gets to court, and there's nothing that can be done. So, this now is going to say, you have to write out a formal complaint, sort of that you have to do with the commissioner, saying, "This is the date it happened, this is when it happened, this is how long it happened, this is what I observed." And then Pat or whoever can look at that and say, "I think there's now a basis to issue a charge."
The judge would have to sort of default to the discretion of the animal control officer to a certain degree.
And that person who files that complaint with animal control is going to have to come to court. If they don't come to court, it's going to be dismissed, because there's not going to be any evidence that animal control has to offer. Now, there's a situation where animal control witnesses it, then they can also be a witness in the case, but.
The only other thing was, and I didn't know if I didn't read this correctly, we have the chart, see?
Yep.
It talks about first, second, and third offense of 100, 500, 1,000, but in the paragraph above, it talks about 1,000 for first, 2,000, and then 3,000. So I didn't know if I was just reading this wrong, or whether those numbers on the chart needed to be changed.
That's perfect. That's, I believe.
Same, yeah.
So, we'll make those changes before it comes forward within, so, council, last time, I believe it was, you wanted the 100, 500, 1,000, the changes were made there, but not within the text of the language. So, I'll make sure those changes are made in the text.
Any other questions, Jeff?
I got a general question. How many, and, Mr. Guyer, are you by yourself? Do you have other officers?
One other officer, sir.
Pardon me?
One other officer, sir.
One officer?
And I'm also a licensed officer.
Yeah.
So, in a county of our size, somebody could be in Willards on a call, and get, their next call could be in Tyasken or Sharp Town, or?
Yes, sir.
You probably have a couple hundred thousand miles on your vehicle, right?
Get a few.
Yeah. And that contributes to response time, and?
Yes, sir.
This, making the complainant go to the extra step would ultimately make your time more efficient, it sounds like. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I can address you, councilman, we, with this nuisance one that he's been referring to, this is, I've heard this, but I was brought in here for a reason. What you are talking about putting into the law here is exactly how it's stated to folks when this problem comes up. If you call me and say, "I got a barking complaint from my neighbor, sat barking at 1:00 in the morning," I go to you, I say, "Look, this is what you have to do. You write out, all the time says barking, because I'm going to write up for, I'm going to write a citation on the one time you're telling me about, and we're going to go before a judge." Because in these cases, and it's written right here in the law, it says, this is a, for barking, it's disturbing the peace of the neighborhood. If I walk up to your house and your dog's barking, it's not disturbing my peace. So, everybody has to be there, and we tell them that upfront. It's clear as crystal. I have a whole routine I run down that says, "You have to be there, the defendant's going to be there, you're going to speak to the judge, you're going to have to put your cases forward," because all I'm going to say is, "This guy called me, said the neighbor's dog was barking, I talked to the neighbor, wrote a citation, here they are." So that's what he's talking about, spelling that out a little more. I mean, the complaint form, obviously, is going to be a little easier, but it's the same, it's the process that we go through. So, hopefully that'll help you guys with the questions.
And more often than not, people are not willing to.
Correct.
To do this.
I can, I can tell you, Fruitland has looked in this.
Sit on it real quick, Joe.
It don't matter, I'm in no hurry.
Okay.
Go ahead, Andy.
Fruitland looked in this, and they didn't take care of everything that the animal control does, but what they did was, they made certain roaming dogs to be just illegal. We don't pick the dog up or anything, but then, then our police officer gets called, he reacts, and he reports to them, so they don't have to come out. They've got, you know, guaranteed witness at that point.
Correct.
On certain claims. Also, we put in there that the complainer, now this would only work on a roaming dog, not, you know, barking or anything, they take a photograph of the dog's on the street, and he's supposed to be back there, that's pretty good evidence, so.
Okay. You know what I'm going to talk about?
Yes. Go ahead.
You know, we have this issue on the east side with these large number of animals in a small, single location, and they grow, and, I mean, everything from buffalo to llamas to horses.
Emus and goats.
Yumos, goats, and it's, they're fed, I will say that. Animal control's been there numerous times, health department's been there numerous times, code enforcement's been there numerous times. But I'm reading this law, and it says here, "An animal to cause unsanitary, dangerous, or offensive condition because of the size or number of animals in a single location, or because a facility is not appropriate or properly maintained." Now, it says animal, it doesn't say domestic animal, farm animal, or anything. Isn't there something in that?
So the USDA actually regulates that, what is appropriate for that kind of animal. And Pat can talk about that, because we've actually spoken to them.
But it's in our law. You say the USDA has to enforce it, but it's our law, it's not the USDA. This isn't the USDA's law, this is our.
Congressman, the, the law you're referring to says what you said. When we go to these locations, these animals are not in any bad shape.
I didn't say they were in bad shape.
I understand, but the way the law is written, it doesn't give us any grounds for saying, "Oh, a large llama has to have 1,000 feet of space. A camel has to have 5,000 feet of space." We don't have that written anywhere. So what Ms. Knock's referring to is, these folks, the folks we're talking about, have to buy, have to buy a license from the USDA. The USDA goes out and certifies and gives them their license.
Do they have that?
Yes. And in the USDA laws, I've looked this up, I spoke to a couple people about it, it says, it doesn't give a specific number, it says the animals have to be healthy and must have enough space to operate.
Okay, with this law, what we've got in our law.
Right.
And this is the complaints I'm getting now.
I understand.
I'm getting complaints about flies, I'm getting complaints about odor. It says, "An animal to cause unsanitary, dangerous, or offensive conditions because of the size or number of animals in a single location."
Right.
"Because the facility is not appropriate or properly maintained."
Mm-hmm.
Now, it's definitely unsanitary because of the odors that's coming off the property.
So that's under the nuisance category, correct?
Yeah.
So that falls under the person that is finding it a nuisance, to prove that it is a nuisance to them. Because when I walk up there, it doesn't bother me.
But you don't live there.
Exactly. So, it's a nuisance to the neighbor. So now, we can write a citation on behalf of the neighbor.
Okay.
And it's going to be up to them to be a witness and to plead their case in court.
So you've never had that complaint from any of the neighbors?
No, that has never been the complaint. The complaint is, "You can't have a camel on the eastern shore. It gets too cold here. There's too many animals, not enough space for them," which is, is not true. The main thing that we look at is the condition of the animals and the condition that they're being kept in, and those conditions are not unsanitary. These are farm-type animals.
So they're cleaning up the manure daily, on a daily basis?
Yeah. But personally, you know, I can say personally, I think 25 animals on 17,000 square feet, or whatever it is, to me, that seems excessive, especially for that area.
Right, right.
But it falls under the nuisance category.
Okay.
As I said, we don't have.
Because all those animals are in very good condition.
Oh, I understand, they're well-fed.
And they have their proper permits to have that amount of animals.
Yeah, okay.
But to your point, and the right below, the B proposes that those neighbors will now be able to file those complaints alleging what the public nuisance is. So, in addition to calling you, you can also tell them, make sure within 30 days, you file this complaint form, and if, you know, three, four, or five neighbors file them all at the same time, that's five witnesses the court's going to hear from, which is probably a lot stronger than just one neighbor making that one complaint.
Now, can I ask, what about documentation? Because as a private citizen, they're not going to have the right to walk on the property to document what their complaint is. Is there somewhere in there, there could be verbiage, that animal control would have the right to investigate and document the complaint that's being filed?
You have, I think you have to follow up at that point in time and do your investigation, and be within what the parameters are at that point in time. And, I mean, they've never trespassed you from coming on the property.
No, they've always welcomed us on the property.
And so.
You've never had to go, you don't have to go on the property to see it, you can stand alongside the.
I can see, yeah.
I've done that, but they invited us on the property, too.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm just wondering if someone wasn't so welcoming, if we would have.
Well, I don't think anybody should just go on the property unannounced. I mean, that's not the proper thing to do. I mean, you know, to file a complaint, especially, you know, you know.
Unfortunately, it is a problem area, but we're following the laws.
I understand.
Just to make sure the issue wasn't lost, looking back on the notes from the September 20th meeting where the gentleman came in and brought up the issues, he specifically said, and this is me reading my terrible handwriting, "The difference between dangerous versus potentially dangerous," I don't really know the distinguished there, he said, "Officer Guyer had a different understanding what that is." He said, basically, he was asking whether we could direct animal control to publish an impounded dog data, or publish a dangerous dog list. Shelter buddy can delineate data and put, and post it. I don't really know what half that means, but I'm just following back on this.
So I think if we're going to have this conversation, we need to go back to the whole issue with that specific incident, because we never had this conversation about this incident. So you've heard. this incident, so you've heard one side and not the other side.
Is there a dangerous dog list?
No, there's no dangerous dog list. Now, now, if, if we deem a dog potentially dangerous or dangerous, we maintain the documentation of it, so someone could, with the Freedom of Information Act request.
Should that be more public, I guess, would be the, I think is kind of what he's getting at, is like, this individual, uh, Brick was the dog that attacked, and should we have, should the neighbors have known that, uh, you know, Ms. Suzie and Mr. Tom got, I'm making that up, um, received Brick, and this dog is potentially a threat to all the neighbors, um, how does that process, I don't know if you can, for, shed more light on that?
But Brick wasn't deemed potentially dangerous. Brick never had any incident with any dog other than a shelter dog, and those incidents were never initiated by him.
I guess, do we need more process when it comes to determining if something, if deeming, uh, do we need more, uh, process to be able to determine where a animal is dangerous versus potentially dangerous?
Councilman, the, uh, our current law covers most of what you're asking. The only thing it doesn't do in what you're asking is if we deem a dog potentially dangerous, there's no notice that goes out. And the reason, the way I say notice is, when, there's two steps. Potentially dangerous is basically the first time an animal has attacked another animal, whether it injures or kills it, it's deemed potentially dangerous if it's an animal. If it's a person, it all depends on severity of the attack, anything like that, we make a determination. So potentially dangerous means this has happened once, here's your one strike, and then, should it happen again, then they become a dangerous animal, okay? Dangerous animal can also be declared immediately on a person. So dog comes and tears half your arm up, it's going to be deemed a dangerous immediately. But with animals, again, and the way I always tell everybody, we don't speak animal, we never will be able to, what caused that attack, we don't know, so basically there's a one strike given, okay? That's my interpretation of it, that's not why it was written that way, that's just how I interpret it.
Should we formalize that, I guess, is the?
My, I don't, that's, that's a legislative question, because now you're getting into people's privacy.
People's personal.
You know what I mean?
Privacy.
Now, with a dangerous dog, the way the county, and the county law is written this way, with a dangerous dog, we remove it immediately. That person then has the right to appeal the deeming of us, uh, us, our deeming of it being dangerous. If they win, they, they can have the dog back, but they have to put all kinds of signs up, saying, "There's a dangerous dog on this property," okay? I have never seen that happen yet, just because I've never lost in an appeal, but that's the way our code is written right now, so I don't know, and in that case, I would have no trouble having a list of dangerous dogs, that would be, whether we say public or, I'm not sure how public you want to make it, because again, I don't know if we're getting into somebody's privacy rights here, but that is a list that we hold and the health department holds. We know what dogs are dangerous in that case.
And we, as the Humane Society, we don't adopt out dogs that have been deemed potentially dangerous or dangerous.
Correct.
Um, Brick did not qualify to be deemed potentially dangerous. Yes, he didn't like other animals, um, but any incident that happened with him was initiated by another dog, and you have to understand that we're taking in dogs that we have absolutely no history on whatsoever, and it's up to us to figure all that out, and three-quarters of the dogs in the Humane Society don't like other dogs. My own dog at home doesn't like other dogs, and she's a chowini, so are we going to, like, it, it's not, it, there's no reason not to adopt a dog out just because it doesn't like other dogs, people just have to be responsible pet owners. And unfortunately, that person, however it happened, because he was given so many instructions, I, I brought in three volunteers to speak with them, because they were an elderly couple, um, and for whatever reason, somehow they didn't latch the door, and he busted out of the door one hour after leaving the shelter. Well, I'm positive that he was frantic when he, when he was out, but, but that's not a reason not to adopt a dog out. We weren't careless in getting him a home.
It was, you feel like it was a proper disclosure to be able to say the, to the new owners of the dog?
Oh, absolutely, they.
This dog did have an issue.
They were told, they, they had agreed to get a fence put in, they, you know, they knew that Brick did not like other dogs. They were instructed to keep a leash on him inside of the house, you know, just in case anything were to happen, you know, with them physically, because they were a little bit older. Yeah, they were given so many instructions, and this isn't something that happens that oft, it happens once in a blue moon.
Well, I think, uh, back to the, the basics of what you prepared, um, I've, I've gone through it, and, you know, anything, any questions that I had, you addressed, is there any other concern, anyone else has?
I have a question. I just have a question about the, the proposed form, how, is that a physical form or can they fill it out online or?
Online form.
Online, okay.
I feel like that wouldn't, and we can have printed copies as well, the animal control can give them.
Okay.
Any Joe?
Question, what, what deems a domestic animal? A hu, a, a, a pig or swine is a.
I know.
Is a farm animal.
Mm-hmm.
But when it becomes a pot-bellied pig, is it a domestic animal then?
It's very complicated, but yeah, basically.
I mean, if somebody keeps a hor, a pony in their house, is that a domestic animal?
Yeah.
That's a domestic animal now.
If they, if they keep a cow in their house, I would say that's.
Hey, Joe, it depends on.
Turns into a domestic.
Excuse me, let her finish. Huh? Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we have that situation all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would say all the animals that, that we're talking about kind of fall under the domestic category on that property.
James, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, it depends on if you name them or not.
If you name them.
Yeah. So we're okay to move forward, am I right? Yeah.
Okay. Good. So the introduction of this will be at the first, at the May meeting?
May 2nd.
Will, Ms. Knox be required to attend that?
That's up to council.
Not a requirement, um, there could be questions that may come up between now and then, so it may benefit you to be here, um, we'll try to keep the time as concise as possible.
It's going to be a busy day, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
It's another busy meeting.
But it, it may benefit, I mean, you may have huge regrets if your, you know, question came up and you would have liked to have been here to answer it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Seems like we got a lot of things coming up on the agendas, if you want to pick another day and have another council meeting, it'd be okay.
We could certainly do that, we could, we'll, we'll, you know, I'm serious, we, we will sort through it, Ms. Hurley, because honestly, if you're telling me there's going to be a lot of stuff, yeah, we're going to have to.
Yeah, maybe the second will be the earliest, I mean, we can possibly postpone it to May 16th. And for any of you council members, I will give you my personal cell phone, if you have any issues, anybody calls you with a complaint, don't go through sending a message through the county, just call me personally, and I think Officer Guyer feels the same way, I mean, we're, we're there to support the community, and I would rather just answer your questions directly than through other parties. And you have my personal cell phone, I gave it to you.
All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk to Jay about that?
Mr. President, I believe the rest of the agenda doesn't have any, you have Mr. Mitchell here, do you need anyone from the county attorney's office for the rest of the agenda?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that the complaint form?
No.
Next item we have on the agenda is a letter of support for the Ward Museum, has everyone had ti, a chance to read this?
I'll talk to you.
Does it seem okay to you?
I'll talk to you later.
Let me pull it up here.
Put yourself.
Letter will be sent out to everybody to try to get them on board and just, uh.
John, I have one, one addition to that, I think we should, um, attach the minutes of that meeting to this letter.
It's, it's going to cost us $20 per person to mail it, how many pages is it, 60?
That was a long meeting, so, I mean, but we can certainly, we can double side it, it's okay.
All right.
I really do.
I'm just joking, yeah, we'll do it.
Yeah.
We'll put the minutes in there. Okay.
Or, or I add on to the letter, look up the minute, or something, I mean, just so that.
We'll attach them, we'll attach them.
You sure? Okay, all right.
Everybody good? Great, okay, wonderful.
Can we just, um, just for clarification, um, the people that would get the letter, John, um?
It should be the entire Eastern Shore delegation, the governor's office, um.
The border regions.
The border regions, Andy Harris, Carden, and Van Hollen.
Okay.
If I'm leaving anybody out, let me know.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, great. Um, so, uh, we have a closed session, but we have this Senate Bill 100, James, you wanted to, to discuss, it's in reference to gun control.
Yeah, it's 001.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's, uh, I mean, it's, it's, I'm pretty sure most of us know what it is, but it's, it's a law.
I don't know what it is.
It says prohibiting a person from knowingly wearing, carrying, or transporting a firearm onto the real property of another unless the other has given certain permission, prohibiting a person from wearing, carrying, or transporting a firearm under certain, certain circumstances and in certain locations, altering the circumstances under which a person is prohibited from possessing a regulated firearm, altering provisions of law relating to obtaining and revoking a permit to wear or carry. I think the, 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 the idea of this bill is that it was almost creating so many restrictions on where you could go with the right to carry that you didn't really have.
Right, right, right. So it's 100 feet from a public dwelling or whatever, so, and you have a lot of people that, uh, carry in churches, and they can't even, they're not even going to be, uh, able to even legally carry and defend themselves or the community that they are trying to protect, because, I mean, how many, how many violent acts do we have in churches these days?
I, I agree that, yeah, it'd be great to send a letter.
Joe, can you make sure your mic is, thank you.
I think it's fruitless, I mean, the bill's going to be signed today, right?
Uh, I don't know if it's going to be signed today, the bill signings.